How are you? Good evening. Welcome.
It's good. Hear me? Good?
Yes.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. Good to see everybody. Just wanted to touch base on our fall season and then kind of give you guys a winter preview. So, our fall season to this point is pretty much wrapped up, except for our football programs at both schools. So, both schools just preparing for Thanksgiving, the freshman JV this weekend, and then the big Turkey Day game next Thursday. So, we'll start with Quincy High. We had roughly 240 students participate in this past fall across the seven sports that we offer. Participation numbers probably pretty par to where they've been. Football saw a little bit of an increase and girls soccer, a little bit of a dip. But if you look at the numbers at North, the girls soccer program had a lot of numbers, particularly three levels, and then, you know, football was right around there, normal. But both boys and girls soccer at Quincy High just had the two levels of RC and JV. Cross-country for both boys and girls were pretty consistent from where they've been, and we're still combined Q and Q in cross-country. Girls volleyball, usual numbers, and then boys golf was right around there, maybe just a handful of kids less than what they've had the last couple of years. So, this point, all the sports have met as league coaches and had their All-Star postseason meetings. So, we had nine Patriot League All-Stars selected over at Quincy High School. I just listed the names there for you guys for reference, but very proud of those folks that got selected, a lot of them older and seniors that, you know, had led their programs. And we also had one MVP selection from Quincy High School, which was Salma Boukhtam, who is a cross-country runner. She's been fantastic. And actually, she, I made a note of it as well, she is going to be competing this Sunday at the MIAA All-State Meet. So, last weekend, she placed fourth overall in the divisional. So, congrats to Salma. We wish her the best this weekend. Other highlights that I wanted to throw out, Jack Dunn, who is our senior boys golfer, he competed at the Division One Self-Sectional as an individual golfer. And then, our girls soccer program won the Team Sportsmanship Award for the Fisher Division in the Patriot League. And then, our girls volleyball program at Quincy High had qualified for the MIAA State Tournament. They received a home preliminary game that they won and then proceeded to unfortunately get knocked out in the next round, but continued their streak of pretty solid seasons and postseason appearance. So, and then I threw their final records for regular season at the bottom. Obviously, football's still at the play, and then the records there for the folks over at Quincy High. And as I said, Q and Q cross-country still combined for both boys and girls. Just transition to North Quincy. They had a little bit more participation over there. As I said, their boys and girls soccer program, both of the genders had three levels to offer, so they had a freshman or a JV2 level. Girls volleyball, consistent with the participation numbers that they've had in the past, and then, boys golf had a slight increase. They had about 25 kids, so had about 270 students across participating in the fall. And then, they had 16 Patriot League All-Stars. A few other programs had multiple selections. Listed those names there. Our girls volleyball program had the MVP from the Fisher Division, which was Kathy Mo, a senior at North Quincy High. So, I think that's two years in a row that North Quincy has had the MVP in girls volleyball. Other highlights to make note of, our boys golf team, special shout-out to Coach Bob Doyle and the program for qualifying for the state tournament this year. In the Self-Sectional, they competed at East and Country Club. So, it was the first time in a long time that they've made it. So, I know Coach Doyle puts in a lot of time with the program, so congrats to him and the boys. And then, their team also won the Sportsmanship Award for their division as well. Football did qualify for the state tournament this year as well. They were the 12 seed in Division Two, but then they lost to Barnstable in that round of 16 matchup. The top 16 teams for football make it to the tournament. And then, obviously, with our girls volleyball program, one of the more successful seasons this past year, this past fall, finished as the Patriot League Champions, having a league record of 16-0. So, they beat everybody in the league. So, they won the title, and then they obviously advanced to the state tournament. They were the number 10 seed. They won two games. They won the round of 32, round of 16, and then unfortunately got knocked out in the round of eight. Two years in a row that they made it to the round of eight, but just fell short of the Final Four. So, and that match particularly went to five sets, so they had a chance. They ended up losing just by two points. And then, we also do have an individual runner at North Quincy, Aluna Kugan Coin, who will also be running alongside Salma at this weekend's All-State Championship Meet. So, she placed fifth. Salma placed fourth, so they were probably neck and neck all weekend. But wish Aluna the best as well this weekend, and to Coach Hennessy as well for his work with the Q and Q program. And then, final records there as well for, on the North Quincy side. I guess before I go to the winter, if anybody had any questions on the fall, I'm happy to...
I just want to congratulate, you know, all of the teams and the coaches. Great season. Sounds like it was a really good season. And I know it's meaningful to the kids, especially in the post-COVID era, to get back and to do all of that. A lot of effort goes in by all of the coaches to that and all of the staff. So, it's great stuff.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, but when I was at the conference last week, the MASCE Conference, Ms. Hubley and I were there. NEASC is running a standards approach for assessing the quality of athletic programs. It's brand new. You would not have heard of it, so I'm not tricking you. They've only reached out to a few schools to pilot it this year, but it really looks like it's going to help us with, I know I've brought up this before about evaluating and orienting coaches, and it includes stuff like that in it. And I'm hoping that we can at least get on maybe their second trial, or if you could look into it, Mr. Mahoney.
Okay.
Because I know that's been one of our questions about how the coaches are oriented and evaluated, and who does evaluate the coaches?
Yep. So, we sit down with them after each season, and obviously, we do more of a combined coaches meeting at the beginning, just to go through, you know, expectations for the season, and then any questions, and scheduling and things of that nature. And then, we meet and just evaluate them towards the end. And then, typically, it's just myself that sits with them, and then I'll obviously chat with the principal after the fact.
And so, the NEASC, the approach to assessing the quality of athletic programs is not about winning and losing? So, I just want you, the crowd, to know that too, that that's not what I'm looking for.
Sure.
It's really about, more about safety and just overall program sportsmanship?
Yes.
And coaching?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. So, when we're looking at the soccer teams and their outcomes, what can we do to make that better? What kind of participation do we have for boys and girls in the soccer teams?
So, the last couple of years, I've seen North Quincy get a lot of, they've had three levels both times, yeah, the last two years. They've had the three levels, so they've been able to have a fresh, field of freshman team. The numbers at Quincy have just been enough to have the two levels, so we typically in the 40 range, or, you know, just shy of 40. So, there's enough to have there. What I have noticed is, I think, a lot of our Quincy youth soccer kids have been heading over to North. Not sure what the case may be, but, you know, we have a lot of the JV girls at Quincy and boys soccer players at Quincy High don't really participate much in the youth. I think they just like the sport and come out for it. So, talent-wise, not so much, but, you know, obviously happy that they're able to participate.
Yeah.
So, some work to do, obviously, at the developmental level, to try to get them prepared for varsity. But Patriot League is arguably the best soccer league in the state. So, I know they have handovers in the state final and Pembroke, I think, too. So, it's a tough league to play in. We have explored over the years, last year specifically with Quincy, on the girl's side, we did ask for a waiver from the league, and we only were able to schedule teams from our specific side of the league, so we didn't play the other side. But it was just a one, it's typically just a one-year agreement to kind of help build the program back up.
So, I guess my question, I mean, even though we had a lot, we had more players at North, the wins and losses are almost the same.
Yeah.
And I know that we can't go too far into the, like, how far into the summer when we can start practicing and all that, and who can run practices and who can't. Why do you think, what can we do, like Hanover and Pembroke and these other, you know, to be more successful? How can we help to do that, you know?
Yeah.
Because as much as, you know, it's not all about winning and losing.
Yep.
It can get to feel defeatist to go and be losing, you know, a lot of times. It doesn't build up any kind of, I don't know, confidence and team camaraderie and all that kind of stuff. You know what I mean?
Yep.
And just like, and I just, my question would be mostly, can we be doing something different? Are we looking at how we are doing things and what we can maybe do better to kind of make a difference in the outcomes?
Yep.
But, you know, I think we don't have to settle for, if other schools and other teams are being successful, why can't we be? And we have a huge population of students, and, you know, how do we get them engaged so that they want to play and give them the support and structure to be successful?
For sure.
If that makes sense, you know?
Yep.
So, I'd like to see us try to figure out in the offseason, like, what we can maybe do to help these teams be more on the winning side than the losing side.
Sure.
And I think the same thing is even with the football teams, you know, maybe the same thing. I mean, I know we have a lot of feeder football, youth football programs and stuff like that, which give them the kids a lot of background, and why isn't translating to what we're doing here?
Sure. Yeah, I think you make good points about the offseason. I know that the coaches put in a lot of effort, but it does start there, too, so.
Something we look at.
For sure.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, just on that point, Mr. Mahoney, I can't quite remember, but I know that there used to be camps offered. Can we do that even though we're not supposed to be coaching them during the summer? Can we offer some sort of camps?
Yeah, we...
Especially for the soccer, because I've seen those North Quincy girls working out by themselves at the end of the summer on the beach at 7:00 in the morning.
Yep.
All of them, crowds of them.
Yep.
And, you know, and I know the coach can't be there, but is there something that we can do, to Ms. Cahill's point, to sort of help them? I think football's going to be a bigger challenge, because Quincy United is...
Yeah.
The city's losing football players, and people are, the youth teams are shrinking like crazy.
Yeah.
They have been shrinking for the past few months.
Yeah, the youth numbers have kind of decreased.
Mr. Bogoli.
One of the things I had suggested a couple of years ago was getting our middle schools involved with some team sports. Soccer's an easy one. It doesn't cost an awful lot of money. They can provide their own balls. All we have to do is provide a T-shirt, maybe a pair of shorts, and a place to play, and someone to referee. So, it's not hard. And what I said before is that that gives you a familiarity with your school, so that you have some pride in your jersey, and that carries over to the high school level, I think.
Yep.
I know when we were successful years ago, we had the middle school program. I played in it. When it was junior high school, sorry. And the same thing in basketball. It's not, they're not high-cost sports to include at the middle school level, I don't think personally. The other thing I was going to suggest was with our coaches, some of them are young coaches, and is there any consideration given to giving them a mentor? I mean, that's someone with some experience, not necessarily to participate in the coaching end of it.
Yeah.
But just to give them a layout as to, you know, how you can build a successful program.
Right.
And I did it for a long time, and we were pretty successful. But I was fortunate that I had great coaching before, so I drew on that. But I just don't see us, you know, helping our coaches to be successful. And I'm wondering if a mentoring program would help them, as well as a middle school program, to build up numbers, particularly at Quincy, where it's dropping.
Yeah.
We have three and a half schools that feed Quincy, so it shouldn't be skewed the way it is, I don't think. So, that's just my observations, and I hope to take into consideration.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, one other possible observation, but it seems like the number of people who are doing AAU or club is, like, every kid does that now.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
And so, that sort of takes them out of the mix also.
Yep. Yeah, a lot of...
Definitely around the middle school age, it takes them out of the mix.
Yep. A lot of teams, a lot of kids will go the club level rather than just staying local and, you know, doing youth travel or whatever. They'll just go to the club, you know?
So, I think that's another big competition. I think it's much bigger than it ever was before, I think. I think it's very a marketing thing that people, and those kids are being coached by Revolution players.
But I think the AAU, those are club teams that are, that feed into high schools. You know what I mean? That's where they're getting a lot of training, the kids and their skillset. AAU, the select teams in soccer and stuff like that, the club teams. But, you know, to Mr. Bogoli's point, maybe something that we, and I don't know if this is something that's out there, but are there, like, coaching clinics? You know, like, where we can say, okay, we have good coaches, but all of us, in whatever we do in life, we can do better maybe, and have some better, you know, training, or maybe better trends and things like that? Are there ever any kinds of programs for soccer coaches or, you know, football, basketball, the coaches, where they can learn some techniques that will maybe help them to help the kids be more successful? I don't know if that's something that's out there.
I think I've seen them over the, I think I've seen some over the years pop up, like, whether it's MIAA or just like each, I know each, like, Coaches Association sometimes has them.
Yeah.
And then, like, we, last year, we jumped into, it's more, you know, it's more of a, similar to a mentorship, but, and we utilize them a lot with our kids. But I know that they have certain specific ones for coaches as well, but it's the Positive Coaching Alliance that we jumped into last year. It's a more of a, it's like a nationwide program, but they'll send a trainer out. So, last year, we did, we did a presentation for the coaches that, we had two sessions. The second one unfortunately got snowed out, but the first time, we had about like 20 coaches there, so, and then they just went through, you know, how to engage kids more, you know? So, I wonder if there's sports-specific ones that we could look into potentially?
Yeah.
But it was, that was successful, and then we had them come out, as I said, with the kids and talk more like leadership style stuff, so.
Which is important, too, right?
Right.
But, I mean, if there's something like that out there that's available, if you can, you know, tap into something like that that can help our coaches, I think that would be a great start to, you know, maybe helping them to, you know, pick up the, not the pace, but maybe help the teams a little bit going forward. Okay. Oh, Mr. Bogoli.
Just to piggyback on that.
Yeah.
When I was a young coach, I found clinics to go to.
Yeah.
I had the privilege to listen to John Wooden from UCLA, three rows away from him, and have him talk to young coaches about how to build a program and what goes into it. And so, I mean, those things are available. They're out there. You have to look for them.
Yeah.
The other thing about AAU, a lot of it's, a lot of it's a money grab, frankly.
Yep.
Anybody could start an AU program. You can just apply and pay the fee and advertise and have them come in and charge $500 or whatever, and you can pocket some good change. And that's what a lot of these people do. So, you have to be careful about AU programs and where you go. Just because you played AAU doesn't mean you're going to come out of there as a better player. You're going to be financially less money in your pocket, but I just, I just don't see it as a, and I know, I know we lose kids in the offseason, like, they're torn between playing for their school team and then playing AAU, or club, soccer. The other thing is, I think the MIA is the biggest inhibitor of our kids developing. I mean, Texas and California and those states that produce a lot of athletes. I know it's a better climate, but we have just the same type of athlete. I played with a guy, Pietravani, who played professional baseball for seven seasons. And you don't play baseball in the winter in New England, but he was the number one draft pick. So, my point is that MIA limits the contact that coaches have with players in the offseason.
Yep.
And that's critical, because you can follow and develop the kids in the offseason, and other states do it. They allow it.
Yep.
I'm not sure what the MIA hang-up is with that, but I think it does impede some of our kids' progress.
Yep.
Just my observation over the years, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you agree with that.
Yeah. I know, they limit, like, to your point, they limit it. You can only do so much. You can do the conditioning and the weightlifting stuff, but sports-specific stuff. So, if you can't, you know, continue to build on those skills, then you might fall beyond.
Yeah. Well, there's three levels of it. You have to be in shape. You have to have skills, and you have to have the knowledge how to play the game. And you can't do it all in two weeks before the season.
Right.
Well, that's hopefully what we can maybe look into that, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's go on to the next.
Yep. Yeah, so just to this point, you know, winter, winter season preparations, pre-Fulco, you know, with scheduling all set and taken care of, and a lot of our, at this point, like, our kids are just registering and getting things in order paperwork-wise. Our athletic trainers are working with our nurses, with physicals, and things of that nature. So, all that's going swimmingly, and then the winter season will start that Monday right after Thanksgiving. So, we'll just kind of jump right from one season into the next. I listed the offerings that we have for both schools. A lot of them Q and Q this winter as we've had in the past. Boys basketball for both schools should have the three levels. Girls basketball should have three levels, possibly two at Quincy High based on just initial signup meetings, but we'll see, we'll see where things look after that first Monday or Tuesday of the season with tryouts. So, and then, I know the topic last year, I had kind of brought it up with the, on the boys' ice hockey side with numbers, but the two programs will be separate for this winter. So, Quincy High will be by themselves, and North will be by themselves as well. We might do a JV kind of combined group, so that if some of the kids that might not have varsity-level experience or skill, they'll still be able to have a chance to play in some games at the JV level. And then, yeah, and then obviously our Q and Q offerings there with girls hockey, winter track, wrestling, swim and dive, and then Q and Q ski. And then, I threw cheerleading in there as well. But, so that's where we're looking forward to on that Monday when we get back from Thanksgiving.
Mr. Bogoli.
Yeah, I had heard about the boys' ice hockey.
Yeah.
Possibly having to combine because of the numbers, particularly at Quincy.
Yep.
So, you're saying at the JV level that the boys' ice hockey may combine?
Correct, yeah.
Quincy, North Quincy.
Just to get, yeah, just to have the opportunity to give some of those kids some games. So, the league, last year we did it. It was, the league was on board with it. We don't really, we try to get a couple other, you know, other schools outside of our league just to play us, but allows those kids that, you know, because varsity, obviously, got to be pretty skilled, and it's a physical game, so there's some kids that might not have the same level of experience. So, you know, our hope is to still be able to offer them rather than just practicing, you know, five days a week. At least, we still able to give them some of our JV games, so.
If they don't play, they can't develop. Who would coach that? Would it be a combined coaching?
Yeah, just the two, the two guys that typically do JV. That's how we did it last year. It ran smooth, yep. I think it was like one practice a week, too, for them. But those kids would still practice with the varsity.
Is that enough?
They'll have enough. North has close to 30 kids.
No, I mean, is that enough practice time?
Uh, yeah, for, no, so those kids will still skate varsity in the afternoons as well. So, they'll still practice those three or four days without a game at the varsity game, and then they'll play probably one game a week for JV, too. Yeah.
Just one other question. Do you have a red suit?
I knew you were going to bring that up, Paul. It's getting close to Thanksgiving. I got a, I got my gray suit ready.
Gray?
Gray. Neutral.
That's neutral.
Neutral.
I have a quick, another quick question, and then I think we should be good. But you given any consideration into the neck guards for hockey? Any thoughts on that? It's an easy, it's an easy, yeah, it's like, you know...
Hot topic for, in NHL, I saw that, too.
But I think it's an easy kind of fix. I know the MIAA, and this is kind of, it's funny, because Paul talked about the MIAA, and we were talking about the cross, the girls helmets.
Yep.
And, you know, they made a determination that it wasn't really necessary, but they haven't made any determinations in regard to the neck guards yet, but we as a system can, you know, can have them wear them.
Sure.
And one of the statements that they made was that the, because the skill level isn't as, you know, as strong in the younger grades and ages, it's probably more important for them to have them, you know, and the control and stuff that they have.
Yep.
So, you know, I'm wondering if you might want to look into that and make a recommendation if the kids should have them.
Sure. Yeah, I can even look at it from an MIA standpoint, too, just to see where they might be at.
Yeah.
Because it is a pretty, obviously, hot topic.
They're kind of just reviewing it, but I think that's something that we can, if we want to, we can implement it, you know? So, Emily.
Do you know how much those cost, Ms. Mahoney?
I'm not, I'm not sure, yeah. I'm actually not, I'm not a hockey guy growing up, but...
Yeah. I'm not sure what the cost is of them, and they're pretty light. They look like a turtleneck, and they, you know, they're pretty resistant to them.
I would like to even go a little further and see if it's something that we could make.
Look into, yeah.
Even if we had to supply them.
It's a small number of, you know, of kids, and, you know, take, if you can, take a look at it and see what it would be.
Yep.
And if we can implement it on our behalf, we can do it, you know? Better safe than sorry, right?
Yeah. The other, can it be a league policy to try? Could you bring that up? Have you had a league meeting for hockey?
They did, they did have it on Monday, yeah. So, that's, I can backtrack with Teddy and Matt and see if it was addressed or brought up, because it was obviously a hot topic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you know, they had the one.
Did you say it was or was not brought up?
I can ask if it was brought up. I'm not sure. It's just, one AD runs it, and then the coaches.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
What?
I run swimming.
Okay. Anything else?
Rick would be very proud.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great to see everybody. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, see you at the game. Can we have a black jacket, boot pants, vice versa, red jacket?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
A red suit.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn. Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor.
I can't. I'm not in the committee.
Thank you.
Red suit. Santa Claus?
I'm throwing off my game over here.
That's the only one.
Good evening. I'd like to call our regular school committee meeting of November 15 to order. I ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for one minute. We'll have a moment of silence. As we know, we're living in troubled times in a troubled world, and we have a lot of Quincy kids as part of our armed forces all across the world defending this nation. Let's keep them and their families in mind. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Bogoli?
Present.
Mrs. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Gatro?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mr. Santoro Mayakoke?
Present.
I'm gonna hear, in the quorum, I don't have my reading glasses with me, or would you mind reading the open forum?
I need to introduce the students as well, sorry.
And our student representatives, uh, from Quincy High School, Mina Altakredi, welcome, and, uh, North Quincy High School student representative, Amy Tan.
Welcome, both of you.
Okay. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Anybody for open forum?
There's one, was one letter submitted?
Hey.
To the Quincy School Committee, the Quincy Education Association would like to take this opportunity to thank Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins and those members of her team who helped to organize the full, first full-day professional development day held on November seventh, 2023. Q E A members have indicated that sessions were thoughtful and useful to their professional practice. They appreciated having options that allowed them to customize this experience relative to their grade level and content. We look forward to working with Assistant Superintendent Perkins again with future professional development opportunities. Sincerely, Gail Cavalo, President, Quincy Education Association.
Just the one.
Just the one.
Last call, anybody here for open forum? See you none, we'll close that portion of our meeting. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Our first item on the agenda is our student recognition, and tonight we're recognizing the National Merit Commended Scholars, so congratulations all. I'm going to announce the students first from North Quincy High School, and I'll ask you to come up and receive your certificate, and then if you could just join us at the podium for a picture, and then I will then do the Quincy High School, uh, student recognition. Same, I'll call you up, please receive your certificate, remain at the podium for a.
Congratulations, you make us proud.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Franklin Chen. Is Franklin here? Uh, Laura Jiang.
Is Laura here?
Come on up, Laura.
Congratulations, Laura.
Congratulations.
Aishen Leon.
Congratulations, Aishen.
Joseph Ethan Mercado.
Congratulations, Joseph.
Congratulations.
Killian Sloan.
Congratulations, Killian.
Congratulations.
Renee Su.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I'm so sorry. Sorry.
And Chloe Wu, from North Quincy High School.
Congratulations, Chloe.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chloe. Congratulations.
And if you could have everyone come up to the podium for a picture, that would be great.
I like to see the paisans up here.
Should stay there.
I know.
Oh, no.
Oh, jeez.
Again, congratulations to our North Quincy High School Committed National Merit Scholars. If you could return to your seats, please, thank you. And next, I'll, uh, announce to you our Quincy High School Committed National Merit Scholars. As I call your name, uh, please, um, come to the podium to receive your certificate and remain for a photo. Catherine Bardwell. Emma Bateman. DeTano Belfort. Sonia Dykstra. And Stanley Tran. Apparently Quincy High did not get the message for tonight, so, uh, we will reach out to them. Uh, but congratulations to our Quincy High Committed National Merit Scholars. Again, thank you.
If you want to take a, just a brief recess, if, uh, those families want to, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to head off, uh, you're certainly welcome to at this time. All right, we had a practice session, now we'll do the real thing. I have a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes for October twenty-fifth.
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made, seconded, and all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, same evening executive session minutes.
To approve?
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, our SIP and PIP review meeting dates, a calendar of school and program improvement plan review meeting dates are shared with the school committee in your packets, the calendar invitations have also been sent out for each meeting. Uh, next is on Saturday, November eighteenth at eleven a.m. Uh, there will be a dedication ceremony for former Quincy Public Schools Band Director, Richard Canealy. The ceremony will begin in the North Quincy High School Auditorium and conclude with the unveiling of the sign for the Richard Canealy Arts Wing. The event is open to the public, so any interested alumni and former colleagues are welcome to attend, so we're hoping to see a lot of people there. Next is the Early College High School Pathway Newsletter, which is shared with school committee in their packets and highlights the new staff members and program initiatives underway for this school year. Uh, next is the upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events, there are a lot coming up. Uh, Quincy High School Drama Club is presenting The Tempest for four performances on November sixteenth and eighteenth at seven p.m., and November eighteenth and nineteenth at two p.m. in the Lloyd Hill Auditorium at Quincy High School. Of course, on Thanksgiving morning, the North Quincy High School and Quincy High School Football Teams will meet for the annual Thanksgiving Day competition. Uh, kickoff is at ten a.m. at Veterans Memorial Stadium, so we hope to see everyone there, it should be an exciting game. Uh, the winter holiday season officially begins in Quincy the next day with a weekend of events capped off by the seventieth anniversary Christmas Parade on Sunday, November twenty-sixth, beginning at noon in Quincy Center and featuring floats and local marching bands, including our own Quincy, North Quincy High School marching band in Color Guard. On November thirtieth, from six p.m. to eight p.m., North Quincy High School Photography Students will be hosting the annual sale to benefit the Boston Children's Hospital. Next is in the spirit of the holiday season, Mayakoke and the Quincy School Community Partnership are once again sponsoring the 'Tis the Season Symphony and Song on December fifth at seven p.m. in the Quincy High School Auditorium. The concert features the Quincy Symphony Orchestra under the direction of Aichi Gatudigawa, and performances from Quincy High School, um, QPS musicians and the John Adams Orchestra and the combined, uh, high school choral group. Uh, North Quincy High School's Drama Club is presenting Almost Maine on December eighth and ninth at seven p.m. in the Peter Crism Auditorium at North Quincy High School. For grade eight students and their families, the two high schools are hosting open house events on Monday, December eleventh at Quincy High School, and Thursday, December fourteenth at North Quincy High School, both starting at six p.m. Elementary, middle, and high school parents will all have the opportunity to attend report card conferences beginning in late November and continuing up to the holiday break. These conferences are an excellent opportunity to meet with your students, teachers, and gain insight into their academic successes and challenges. I urge parents to take advantage of this great opportunity. And finally, winter concerts are being scheduled for all schools, some in December and others in January, as they return from winter break, a complete schedule will be, will be shared on the Quincy Public Schools website and social media in the coming weeks. So with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions, Superintendent? See you none, nothing in the old business, we'll go to item five, new business, item A. Superintendent, you introducing this?
Uh, yes, uh, our English, uh, learner program, program review, uh, if we could have, uh, Ms. Wojcicki. And her, and the family liaisons. Welcome, everybody. I'll turn, uh, the presentation over to Ms. Wojcicki.
Good evening, everyone, it's an honor to be here to present the Program Improvement Plan. It would also like to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of the following family liaison team members who supported specific goals. Sitting on the far left-hand side of me is Ray Lo. Sitting on my immediate left-hand side is Ben Wu. Sitting on my immediate right-hand side is Laura Tong. Sitting on the far right-hand side of me is Moshi Dong. To date, this amazing dedicated family liaison team has completed many professional development hours to develop their skills for this daily work. Some of these direct hours have been offered through the UMass Translation Center, while other hours have been spent in our reflective team meetings to share the information from these classes. These professional development hours, combined with my language access professional development in our constant discussions as a team, have ignited procedures and best practices to equally engage all families, and I'm very grateful for their time and expertise. Also, I would like to mention the site-based liaisons who are also helping to improve family engagement at the following schools, Carolina Sayidim at Quincy High School and Emily Carey at Atlantic Middle School. After I present the Program Improvement Plan for English Learner Education, followed by a question-and-answer period, the family liaisons will share their presentation on their achievements in addressing family engagement. Now, I would like to begin with an overview of the English Learner Education Program, which embraces one thousand six hundred and thirty-two English learners. Quincy's English Learner Education Program includes sheltered English immersion, where the students attend math, science, and social studies with teachers who have received some training to work with students who are learning English. Importantly, the program includes English as a second language instruction or English language development instruction in English classes taught by a highly-trained EL teacher focusing on developing the listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills in English within small classes at the student's English language level, at the student's home schools, and during the school day. The English Learner Education Program included five goals last year. Here we are, we're gonna walk through the, the plan. On page twenty, goal one is listed, addressing the student's success plans. For students who don't meet their proficiency target identified by the state, a student's success plan is developed with a goal, either in literacy through reading and writing, or in oral language through listening and speaking, as well as in an intervention to support their progress. We did not meet the goal to increase by five percent from a base of fifty-six percent, as noted by the 2023 access results. On page eighteen, there is a provided chart by grade level showing the pandemic impact that remains in attendance concerns noted by the participation rate. The teachers and students are working to close this gap with incremental gains toward pre-pandemic progress. Progress towards English language proficiency will be a district goal for twenty-three, twenty-four. In the plan notes that the district proficiency target team will meet the individual site teams to monitor action plans and progress towards proficiency. On page twenty-one, goal two is listed, addressing the state seal of biliteracy. We met this goal with distinction, with more than ten students in their junior or senior year awarded with the seal, we had forty-four. Last year marked the first year that Quincy Public Schools awarded the state seal of biliteracy and recognized twenty-three high school graduates who demonstrated proficiency in English in one or more languages. Two students earned this recognition in more than one language, and these graduating seniors included twelve former English learners and four current English learners. On page twenty-two, goal three is listed, addressing the social media networks. The family liaisons quickly educated me about the social media platforms, WeChat and WhatsApp. We met this goal with distinction, with more than twenty-five percent participation from a base of fifty. The WhatsApp communication in Portuguese or Spanish includes two hundred and fifty-six parents or guardians. The WeChat communication is in Chinese, including seven hundred five parents or guardians. And based on parent feedback, individual WeChat school accounts were created to offer families a school-based community for sharing and connecting with each other. On page twenty-three, goal four is listed, addressing the parent academies. We met this goal, the family liaisons will share more detail in their presentation, thank you, team. On page twenty-four, goal five is listed, addressing district translation. We met this goal with the completion of a district interpretation and translation handbook. You received your copy, looks like this. During the PD days, the elementary and middle school EL teachers focused on family engagement through the lens of language access, and the family liaisons and I provided professional development on language access on these PD days and at a mentor meeting. Also, we attended professional development workshops addressing language access to share with the district. As a culminating activity, all K to twelve EL teachers, the family liaisons, and I offered input on this handbook. That concludes the five goals for last year. Now, the English Learner Education Program includes six goals for this year. So on page twenty-five, goal one is listed, addressing the student's success plans with the proficiency targets increasing by ten percent in grades nine to twelve from a base of twenty-one point nine, six point nine percent in grades one to eight from a base of fifty-six point nine, as measured by the 2024 Access Edwin Report. On page twenty-six, goal two is listed, addressing the awarding of the state seal of biliteracy for up to thirty-six stu-, I'm sorry, thirty-five students in their senior year. There are twenty-one seal recipients already approved for the class of 2024 from testing in April of 2023. They represent ten different languages, with the following four languages unique to this class. We have Russian, Filipino, German, and Lithuanian. We have sixty-eight students registered to take the assessment on December sixth, seventh, and eighth. In grade twelve has twenty-eight registered students. Grade eleven has forty registered students. And all sixty-eight students have met the ELA MCAS requirement of four hundred seventy-two or higher. These sixty-eight students will be tested in fourteen different languages, which include Albanian, Arabic, Burmese, Dutch, French, Hindi, Korean, Mandarin, Polish, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, Thai, and Vietnamese. We have thirteen students interested in a retest from April of 2023 to be scheduled soon. In addition to the December testing and retest session, we will be testing again in April of 2024. Very exciting. On page twenty-eight, goal three is listed, addressing the new parent orientations. The family liaisons will share details in their presentation. And on page twenty-nine is goal four listed, addressing the parent orientation, parent academies, and the family liaisons will share details again of that in their presentation. On page thirty, goal five is listed, addressing the Language Access Plan. DESI invited Quincy Public Schools to join its first cohort of districts to participate in an academy-style training on language access plan development. And after sixteen months of training and consultation, the district will have gained experience with a continuous improvement cycle of planning, implementing, documenting, and monitoring their language access service for families, starting in January. On page thirty-one, goal six is listed, addressing the ESL curriculum pilot. So during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the elementary, middle school EL teams will pilot three ESL curriculum programs to identify the best fit for the English learners. In conclusion, as always, we continue to encourage the families to become active participants in their children's education, the Quincy Public Schools, and we continue to maintain strong, meaningful partnerships that support English learners and their families. I think the richness of cultural diversity in Quincy is one of the city's greatest attributes, and we are honored to work with these students and their families so that they feel welcomed, supported, and respected as valuable members of the community. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your support of the English learner education program, and now I invite any questions or comments that you may have.
Mrs. Cahill.
I just have one question. Is this, is this translated in all the languages that, that you give to the parents or that they know what to do?
No, this is actually just for the staff, so it's an internal document.
Okay, okay, good. I didn't know if it was, um, you gave it to parents on how to use the system and things like that, but, okay, great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, thank you so much, really. This was a pleasure to read. It really was a pleasure to read. The amount of work that you folks are doing is amazing, really, and it's so comprehensive. So I really want to thank you for that. I have a couple of specific questions, not too many. On page eighteen, with the access testing, why does it seem that as the students get older, they make less progress? I mean, sometimes it could be like map assessment where there's not that much progress to be made. I'm not sure why that is, but... If you look, you know, the first grade is a fifty-three percent, the second grade is a seventy-nine percent, but when you get down to the high school, it's like nineteen and twenty percent. What do you think that, is there... Is anything I'm missing there?
Well, for me, if I had to look at it, I have a lot, we have a lot of students that are coming in as beginners at the higher levels in middle school and high school, so they're beginner newcomers, and we have some slave students in those levels too, more at that level.
Correct, yeah. And my other question is, is there a difference between making progress and meeting targets? Because I've heard, I see both.
You see both. The state makes it as their proficiency target, and I'm always going, can we make progress towards that target? So you'll probably see both.
Okay, all right. The seal of biliteracy, again, is absolutely amazing, and kudos to the students. We don't even teach most of those languages, and these kids are just getting that kind of content by themselves, and really, they really deserve a lot of credit for that. They really do. So it's amazing. I love the social media. I have friends in Spain. They do WhatsApp. I don't know what to tell them. It's really interesting. And your goals for next year are ambitious, but, but great. The Language Access Plan is phenomenal, just looking at that thing on the last page here. So I can't wait to see what you folks say about that. It's going to be a lot of work, but you'll be leading the state in this kind of work, and I'm so proud of the fact that we got into that. And the curriculum pilot, once again, Quincy Public Schools is allowing our educators to take a look at some different curriculums and assess them and then make a recommendation to the administration, you guys, about which ones to implement. And I think we do that for our teachers all the time. They do it for us all the time, and I'm just so proud of that. So I just wanted to get that statement out there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Gatto.
Just a quick question. Echo everything Emily said. Thank you for all the good work that you're doing. The, what do you see in terms of the trends for language access in any of these tools? You know, the immediate interpretation, the scheduled interpretation, the machine translation, et cetera. It is, the, the tools are there. Are people, more people using it? Do you keep those, that data?
Yes, actually, it was funny that you bring that up. Back in November of 2020, I started specifically just targeting IEP meetings. There were about forty requests in the month of September. I looked at it, this September, we had ninety-seven. So it was interesting to see November of 2020, now we're at ninety-seven. I'm like, wow, it's interesting, the trend.
Is, beyond IEP, do you?
Yep, and now the ninety-seven is beyond the IEP, so I can't even compare apples to apples because now it's, can we have it with a family? Can we have a family meeting? Can we have, um, school tours with this family coming in? So it's nice, where we started with, here it is for IEP meetings. Now it's like, when do you need an interpreter? And that's what they get.
Do you break it down by category?
Now I do.
You do, yeah. I mean, it would be good to see those trends in the years ahead.
Yeah.
What people are asking for translation or interpretation services for. Are there bigger issues? You know, any feedback or, or surveys that you do on the tools?
Oh, that would be great, because everything is coded, so we can do that comparing going forward. Yep.
That'd be helpful. Great stuff, right?
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
I did have one other. So in, in the report, you talked about opting out. Do you find a lot of parents, a lot of families opt out from the ELL?
No, we have less than thirty out of this, over sixteen hundred kids.
And when we, and when you have those families that opt out, or students that opt out, do the liaisons try to communicate with them to say why it's a good thing for them to be involved in the program? Is that something that we do?
If the parent does need that support, of course, yes. We always ask the parent, do you need an interpreter? And it's now becoming correct protocol where...
Or even talking to the families about their students coming into the program to, to learn the English language. Do we do that?
Actually, we do do that. That's part of our parent, um, parent orientation. They actually talk about English learner education because, of course, lost in translation, what is my child getting involved in? Yes.
That's what, you know, that's what I mean.
No, good thinking.
They might feel like it's not something they want to participate in because they don't understand what it's all about, so...
Yep.
You know, do the liaisons talk to them and kind of encourage them? Because obviously, as we know, it's a detriment to the student if they're in a situation where they don't understand, you know?
Right, so, yeah.
Thank you for your work, too.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? All right, slide right into the next piece.
We have to have an approval of the plan.
Oh, okay. Motion, approve the plan. And Mrs. Lebo, second to Mr. Begoli. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the ayes have it. Who's on first?
Heather, do you want to lead the introductions for our family liaisons?
Sure. All right. Here again, we have the family liaisons who have been working very hard in terms of making sure the family engagement piece is set in Quincy Public Schools, making sure it is equitable for all our families. So we're going to start off with Bin Wu.
Good evening, dear school committee. My name is Bin Wu. As one of family liaison, it's a pleasure to sit here again and report our work in the past year. This time, we are going to talk about exploring family engagement. At family liaisons, our mission is to serve as a language and culture bridge between families, schools, and the community. Today, we are going to learn ways that QPS promotes and supports language access to equally engage all families. Learn about the cultural differences addressed by the family liaisons. Experience the new parent orientation and parent academy. Let me emphasize again what is language access. Language access describes the support, including staff and services, that's address communication barriers between individuals who cannot yet speak, understand, read, or write officially in a shared language. And let's take a look of our resources. What we have for interpretation are language line and interpreter for scheduled meeting. For translations, we have our QPS website translated into different languages, translated report cards for elementaries. Also, for social medias, we have started using WeChat and WhatsApp, and translated newsletter via Smore. That's all for me. Thank you again, and welcome my colleague Laura.
Thank you, Bin. Building relationship between students, families, educators, and the community, and debilitating barriers to participation is the deathly definition of family engagement. Also, this is what we do for our families. Serving as the bridge to connect different parties, helping them to get involveded and let them feel they are part of the community. But how can we identify the, who needs the language support? When the families are new to the Quincy, they will be asked, what is the home language during their school registration process? If it is other than English, the student will be screened for English learner service, and family will receive the interpretation support. Once the student identified it as EL student, we will start the family outreach. Four of us represent the top four languages in Quincy: Cantonese, Mandarin, Portuguese, Spanish. We will contact the family by using our native language to introduce the Quincy Public School and answer their question or concern. As a result of that, family can use the most comfortable language to communicate and to ask question. We have different tools for families to contact us. They can make phone call, through their social media, or send email to me, to us. To ensure the EL families are having the same resources and receiving the information in the new environment, we organized the workshop and training to them. We have new parent orientation to new families. Also, parent academy to the EL and the former EL families to talk about the school system. It is the same purpose. We hope they can get the information without any difficulties, and we explain the cultural difference. We are presenting those workshops or training by language groups and offering day and evening session to accommodate different family situation. So I will pass to my colleague Ray. He will explain more details about the new parent orientation and parent academies. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. So, um, thank you for having us again. Nice to see you this year. So, um, once we know the new families from central registration and we know their students already start with school, then we will contact the family again and invite them to our new parent orientations. We deliver this workshop to new families by language group, Chinese, both Mandarin and Cantonese, Portuguese, and Spanish. And we will offer in-person and virtual meetings during the day and in the evening. So since it's the new service that we provide, the current schedule for our new parent orientation will be once a month. Um, but we will always check with the number of new families coming in and might offer, you know, twice a month or as needed. And then we started this service since the end of last June. And this year, we start our, our new parent orientation on August thirtieth, when the school not even started yet. And we had a great success by having eleven Chinese parents to participate. We believe with more of our outreach to the new families, we will have more participants throughout this school year. Now, you are all invited to experience a new parent orientation in Cantonese. So all of you might feel a little bit confused. Yes, it's okay, because I, I, I definitely using Cantonese to present the, the workshop to our Chinese parents. And as you can see the, um, see the image, we also translate the handout to their language too. This is the way that we deliver our new parent orientation to new families using their languages. We all know that moving to a new environment might be hard for those families, so we hope this workshop can make them feel, uh, feel more comfortable and more familiar with our school system. So these are the topics that we teach for new parent orientations. So the first for the QPS official website, we show them how to use the translation tools for the website and choose their own schools. Uh, most recently, to learn more about schools and community. We also teach them how to read our school calendar. You know, learn when will be the half-day for their students and when will be the holidays. So since I'm from China, so the only holidays I know would be Chinese New Year and also summer break. So, but here, uh, we have a lot more, you know, holidays. And in China, we don't even have like a half-day schedule at all, so very lucky of them. So therefore, we need to let parents know the school calendar well so they can have a better plan. And then we, um, you know, we show them how to connect with schools by, you know, sending email or making phone call. And we strongly encourage them to contact our schools, not only when calling out sick, but also if they have any other concerns, since we can offer a language line support for those parents who don't even speak any English. And we briefly talk about what is Aspen and why using Aspen would be important for parents. For more details about Aspen, we will also recommend them to participate our parent academy and learn more. We also teach them when their students get sick and when need to stay home. And more importantly, we let them know that students are not allowed to bring, you know, medication by themselves. You know, since back in my country, we can bring medication to school and take it by ourselves. So here, we must let our school nurse know that the student need to take medication during school time and then the school, uh, the school nurse will give it to them. And we, like, like we said before, we reintroduce our EL program to our new families because many of them will ask if the EL classes are happening outside of school. When I was in China, I always took extra classes outside of school, yes, and most likely in the weekend. So there is no social life for me at all. But here in Quincy, those EL classes are happening during school days, so parents don't need to worry about paying extra money to help their students to improve their English. In addition, we will introduce LPAT to new families and encourage them to join if they want to give extra support to their students and school community. Finally, we will share different community resources like major health service around in Quincy, library, food service, and so on. There is one time that I even brought some of the families to the Thomas Kram Library to visit and become their tour guide. Why not?
Hooray.
Pull the mic a little closer.
I'm Moshi, and tonight I'm going to be talking about some of our other initiatives. And we, what we have on the screen is the parent academies. The parent academies are virtual meetings presented by the family liaisons directly in the top languages spoken by the parents of English learners and former English learner students in Quincy Public Schools. As mentioned before, those are Mandarin, Cantonese, Portuguese, and Spanish. Just like you were able to experience a new parent orientation in Cantonese, now I'll invite you to experience a glimpse of a parent academy in Portuguese. 谢谢。So as, as you can see, that was just a little glimpse. The parent academy is presented in the native language. And as you can see the images on the screen, the PowerPoint, the materials that we use are also translated to the language for the specific session. And we hope that that is a way for the parents to have exposure to our school system without the need for an interpreter. The communication can be easier during these times when they are learning something about the education system. So the goal of these academies is to help the parents of English learners and former English learners learn more about our education system here in Quincy Public Schools in the native language. The topics that we choose for the parent academies reflect the most frequently asked questions that parents have. And also, last year, we started the parent academies and we were offering morning sessions. But in order to encourage more participation, we decided to add second sessions in the evenings so that we could avoid conflicts with the parents' different work schedules. On this slide, you can see our numbers for participants. The columns in blue have the information for last school year. We had four parent academies. And we saw an, an increase, um, after the first, second, and third, we saw the numbers increase. But if you notice, the column in orange, we already had a, have a, had a parent academy this school year. And you can see that the increase was a lot probably because of the increase in the, offering the evening sessions. So the more parents could join, if they couldn't make time in the morning, they could join in the evenings. Some of the parent academy topics that we will be discussing this year, like I mentioned before, they are based on the parents' most frequently asked questions when we have spoken with them. For example, it could be, um, how do I check my child's schedule and attendance, et cetera? Some parents are not familiar with having a student portal that they need to log into, and they might not know that they can, unless they get something printed- And they might not know that they can, they, unless they get something printed in paper, they might not know that they have the ability to go and look somewhere for, um, how many absences their child has, tardies, their schedule, who, what's the name of the teacher? And also, how do I access my child's report card? Um, sometimes the parents don't know that they, at the end of the term, they will be published and they can go and download them and, and look at the grades, become familiar with how their child is doing in school. Another question is, how do I prepare for a report card conference with my child's teacher? Sometimes parents are, um, are thinking, yes, I would like to meet with the teacher, but they might not know that the conference is only, um, 10 minutes, you know, so it would be a good idea to come prepare with some questions. Or perhaps if your child has more than one teacher in the older grades, um, choose the teacher that you would most want to speak to if you can't, um, make an appointment with every single teacher. So those are some of the things we talk about. Another question the parents have is, what type of state assessments will my child take? And why do we take state assessments? For example, we try to educate parents about the parents of English learners. The, um, the students take the access test. And some parents may not be familiar with it. They know that the student is in a English learner program, but they don't know that there will be a state assessment later that will allow them to see, um, the progress year over year of their students in this English learner program. The same with the MCAS. Some parents don't know, what is the purpose of it? Will this affect whether or not my child, uh, is promoted to the next grade? Or what, what does it mean? Why do we take those? And then later in the school year, we talk about, what should I do before the school year ends? Should I, um, prepare, like, what, what should we thinking about for the summer? Uh, Quincy offers summer programs for English learners. And we try to talk about those with parents so that they know that when those offerings come, that they, um, can sign up, they can have a plan for their students during the summer. And what can my child do during the summer mon- months? Um, they may not know that there's a reading list, that there are books that the children can pick and read during the summer, um, or that they can participate in the summer programs or just other activities. They, um, they can become familiar with recreational activities that may be offered in the summer, some classes, some sports. So we try to, um, find out that information and share with them so that they can have an idea on what to plan for. Now, besides working with the, with the families, we have also been working with QPS sta- QPS staff and professional development. Um, last year, we, the family liaisons and Heather Wojcik, we were working on professional development on family engagement through the lens of language access for both elementary and middle school EL teachers. And then we also presented at a mentor meeting for all new teachers and their mentors. Now this year, we were fortunate to present at our district-wide professional development day. We were able to present two sessions about family engagement to a total of 59 QPS staff. We had the opportunity to share some of the ways that QPS is promoting and supporting language access. And we also were able to encourage the participants to work on their own plan for family engagement. Well, we are very grateful that you've made the time to have us here to share our, uh, projects and we thank you for your time.
Do you have any questions, Mrs. Lebo?
No question, but I just think what a valuable asset you folks are to us. When I see the num- the increase in the numbers and the participation and these families feeling like they can, they can talk to somebody who can understand them. And I, for the first time, I understand the difference between interpretation and translation. But, um, really, I'm just so grateful that you're here and doing this kind of work for our families.
Mr. Ghetro?
Uh, a, a couple of questions, but I, I just want to say, I'm astonished how far we've come as a school district and as this society around language as, uh, uh, access over the last, just over the last five years, you know, or, or, or 10 years, but definitely in the last five years. And, and you're doing a great job of it. It's, it's pretty astonishing. Um, so I had a couple of quick questions. So how many home languages do we have in the district based on registration?
Do a mental math.
Scores? Thousands?
That's a lot.
Yeah, no, that's what I meant, hundreds?
Yeah. It's definitely a lot, because I was thinking of one school in particular. When I was visiting, um, Point Webster, they had a whole chart of the 38 different languages. And I'm like, if your school has 38, what does the district have?
That's what I, I'd be curious.
Yeah.
Next time you before us, how, how many home lang- languages if we track? If, I mean, I, I, I'm assuming it's just exploding and continues to explode.
Right.
And diversify. And it would, it'd be curious to know the trends in those languages from, from year to year. And do we know now, um, the breakdown of home languages, uh, you know, percentage-wise for Cantonese, Mandarin, Portuguese, Spanish? And if there are other major ones, do we, do we have that information? Like what, what percentage of, uh, home languages or Cantonese do?
Okay, we can get that for you.
Yeah, that'd, that'd be useful. And then I had a question on, um, uh, the WeChat and the WhatsApp. I'm, I'm, I'm aware of WhatsApp. I'm, I'm not aware of, of WeChat or Smore. So are these, um, social media veh- vehicles through which you chat and it translates? Or, or how, can you, can somebody just speak to those and how you use those?
She had the two mics, okay. All right.
Whoever has experience using them.
I know. You guys have experience using them.
You said you are familiar with WhatsApp, right?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. You know, I mean, I know, I know it's, it's kind of a texting and communicating.
It, it is, yeah. Um, it, it also makes it easier for, a lot of families don't, um, have voicemail set up, but they will be able, if I call them and they don't answer, I can send them an audio clip that they can listen to later sometimes.
And it translates?
Uh, no, I, I would, I would just leave it in.
Oh, oh, so these are not translation tools. These are just communication tools?
Correct, communication tools, yeah.
And, and what's Smore?
Um, Smore is a tool for newsletters that, just like a webpage would have a button to translate the text, it would translate what has, what is written in English. You can pick your language and it would automatically translate what was written into the language you choose.
Oh, excellent. And, and we pay what, an annual fee for, for that translation service? And, um, last question. The, um, i- if you connect with parents and, and parents don't speak English but want to learn, do we refer them somewhere or, or, or do you get that question often and, and how is that managed?
We do get that question often. Um, we have partners with Quarry. So we refer them to Quarry for, if they want day, free English classes during the day. If they want free English classes in the evening, we refer them to Teaching Resources of America. And we also work with To- um, Thomas Crane Library and they have their walking English classes. So we do, we have those as partners and we work with them to make sure that, that's a common question, actually. LPAC gets all the time. The families are like, this is great, you're taking care of our children, but what about us?
What about us?
So it's nice to have the partners in, within the community to help and address that.
Well, you know, I know that we're all super proud that you're all on board and you're doing a great job and appreciate all the work that you do for QPS families and students. Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is wonderful and thank you for the impact that you're making on our families. This is great work. Um, just a quick question on the new parent orientation topics. Do you cover, um, also like, um, communicating transportation issues or like busing? Um, and in sports or after school or how to sign up? Do you go over that stuff with them as well?
So since it's that, like a new program that we created like last year, so, um, we do, um, remember last year we did say, um, we sent out a welcome packet to all the new families. So and then, uh, those topic that we speak, it's all from, um, those new, uh, you know, the welcome packets. And, uh, because we thought they might be like, uh, those are the more important topic that we can, you know, let the parents to understand first. Certainly they have, you know, further cr- further question, further concern. So that's why, you know, our parent academies or, you know, our individual, you know, contact, you know, to help them to, you know, to solve a lot of more concerns. But you know, um, this is a great advice that you, you give it to us. So, so we, we might think about, you know, adding some new topics for our new parent orientation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Begoli?
Uh, just to follow up Kathy's question. How difficult is it to get, uh, children engaged in extracurricular activities? And what, uh, what types of communication do you have with, with the parents and the children to get them involved and have connection with the school?
That's when we work with our partner Quarry, because we have the U and I mentoring, which is wonderful. So a lot of our families go and get involved with that. So our new students in middle school will say, oop, we want to go through U and I mentoring, the LOL program as well that Quarry has. Our middle school and high schoolers will be enrolled in things like that. But we work with Quarry. Quarry goes in and does presentations at the schools for the students. And we actually send out translated advertisements about it so that the families are understanding what's going on and then they are enrolled that way. But we involve Quarry, the families, and then the EL teachers at the school.
Thank you.
Yes? Is the switch on?
Um, I know you mentioned, uh, parent.
You need the microphone so they can hear you at home. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's off.
Okay. I know you mentioned that the parent academies are offered in four languages. Am I right about that? Um, so where do the parents that don't speak one of the, those languages and want help navigating, like Aspen and other student resources, where do those parents go for help?
Um, they, they can also contact us. Our, our information is on the website. And we can always go through them individually using the language line. Since, um, if they speak a language that we don't speak, we often use the language line to go through things, um, with them and explain them individually.
Mrs. Cahill?
Um, I have a general question about the ELL program. How do you, I mean, we have a lot of students, right? Um, are we in good shape in regard to the teachers that we have and the caseloads and all that? Are we in a good place? Um, you know, how do we find? I think at one point we talked about, I, I talked to the superintendent, and I don't know if we put it in policy, but we want to talk about the, um, specialists and, and to see what their caseloads are like and if we're overloaded, um, if we're, you know, going over the numbers that we're required to, um, stay below, like. So, so where, where are we in that? Are we in good shape? Do we need more teachers? I mean, we always probably need more, right? But, um, you know, are we, are we doing what we need to do, um, in terms of, um, caseloads and, and accessibility for the students?
Good question. We actually hired, we had three new teaching positions for this year. We had one over at Southwest based on their numbers. So their numbers went from two teachers to three for this year. We also had another teacher over at South, um, sorry, Lincoln Hancock. So that became a staff of five teachers to six, again, looking at student numbers. And it was nice to see where Beechwood Knoll, they had a teacher and a tutor. And it's so wonderful with like a tutoring model because that's particular tutor was, you know, finishing her degree and everything. And now she got, we got a third teacher, well, position. So she's the second teacher over at Beechwood Knoll. So yes, we are looking at the numbers and we did hire and created three teaching positions just for this year.
And that, and you feel like that you're in a good place right now with, with that addition?
I do. But like, uh, the staff in two weeks, I'll ask for, um, new schedules, especially at the elementary level, just to make sure that beginners are getting what they need and our level threes and fours as well. But yeah, I like to monitor it just in case, because we had a situation like two years ago at Atlantic where we had to hire another teacher for that building. We went from three teachers to four mid-year. So I, I am open to that if we, if the need is.
You're assessing it as you go.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lebo?
That was the question I was going to have too, because I can see how your numbers, but the students are at different levels and they need more hours based on their level. So you, you have to balance that as well when you be using something. And these teachers are, they're, they have multiple students in a day, right? So they're not you seeing the same kids even at elementary there. It's like a pull-out model.
Correct, yes, a pull-out model.
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening again, everyone. Uh, next item agenda is the Professional Day of Learning Review. And, uh, before I hand the presentation over to Mrs. Perkins to review with you how the Professional Day of Learning went, and I can say it went excellently. I, I do want to make sure I, I thank the mayor and the school committee and all of our business partners for helping us fund and, uh, promote, uh, this Professional Day of Learning for our, us, our professional staff. 950-plus educators attended, 51-plus different offerings, which, uh, Mrs. Perkins will review with you. And a fantastic keynote speaker in the beginning, Ken Williams, who did an amazing job. And I think all of our staff were very impressed by, by his keynote. To everyone, it was very, very impressive. And of course, I want to thank, uh, Mrs. Perkins and the entire SLT, as well as our entire staff, uh, as well as custodians at our maintenance department. Pretty much everyone in the Quincy Public Schools worked together to make this a reality for our 950 professional educators here in the district. And there are so many people to thank and I, I thank them all for making this a, a great day. With that, I will hand the presentation over to Mrs. Perkins.
Thank you very much Superintendent Mulvey. So we do have a, a, just a short video that Kelly Powers, who is phenomenal, created for us. So you can get a flavor of what the day was like. Uh, I just asked Ms. Graham, I'm not sure, I don't see it up on the screen. So, um, we'll just have the, maybe the IT person come and pull it up. The video, it was, um, shared in Google, I think. Is this your Google account? Okay, so we'll work on correcting that. But while we get the video straightened out, um, I do just want to thank the school committee and the mayor for the support that you continue to give us in terms of professional development. It is, personally, I feel that it is crucial to the development of our educators and so that we're constantly assessing and providing the best possible services for our students. Um, so it was a fantastic day of professional learning on, uh, November 7th at Quincy High School. Um, I really need to thank Principal Ford and Assistant Principal Ed Smith, as well as the staff at Quincy High School for the use of their space. It was quite a challenge to have, uh, you know, over 950 educators all in one space. So it definitely disrupted the school a little bit, you know, on Monday. But they were great sports about it and they were just so accommodating. Um, so we really appreciate that. The day began with a really incredible keynote speaker, Ken Williams, and continued with over 80 breakout sessions given by 41 different presenters. And we did, a lot of them, we, you know, we had outside people that came in, experts in their different fields. But we also did have some Quincy Public School staff. We, um, we had Cara Pekasek, who did something on science. We had the family liaisons. We had Abby Nazaro at, uh, from Central Middle School, who did something on book selections. Um, so we did, we had the digital literacy specialists and the REACH teachers all presented, um, different sessions for, you know, offered different breakout sessions for the day. So we absolutely had also some Quincy Public School staff and we greatly appreciate them participating and their expertise. So the day was an unbelievable success. And there are just so many people that we need to thank that made this all possible because it was definitely a lot of planning and work. And so in particular, I really need to thank the curriculum and assessment team that did the majority of the work and the planning. I need to give an, a special shout-out to Kisa Gala and Larry Tagliari, who gave up their Sunday to be at Quincy High School to make sure that everything was set up person, uh, perfectly. Sunday to be at Quincy High School to make sure that everything was set up perfectly. I walked in and Larry Tag was on the floor measuring nine hundred and fifty seats to make sure they were all perfectly separated and everyone had enough legroom. So I cannot thank them enough. And Brad Smith and other members from the city of Quincy Public Buildings, as the superintendent said, the members of the custodial team, you would have thought that we had a professional crew that were breaking down rooms and setting up rooms like nobody's business. It was really unbelievable. They, you know, we had the gymnasium set up with nine hundred and fifty chairs, and then we had broke down half of it because we had to get the, you know, some more room for lunch. Those custodians were wheeling out tables, and the food service people were, you know, putting out the tablecloths, and it was just really, oops, I'll stop this for a second. It was just really unbelievable, it all came together just so beautifully. In addition, I need to thank Mike Marani, Bridget Vaughn, Kim Quinn, Julie Graham, Mar Papil, Chris Tierney, Kim Conley, Andrea Huer, Heather Wojcik, and Jen Leary. That was the team that worked with me pretty much since last year. We started this in the spring, once we knew it was going to be a reality. And they, we have worked, we worked all summer long on securing the best possible presenters. And so in order for you to just kind of get a, we just have a very quick little video for you to get an idea of what the day was like. And then we'll, I'll just end with talking with you about our next steps after this fantastic So as you can see, it took a lot of people to make this day possible. We had our secretarial staff from Cottington was helping. The transportation, we offered shuttles, you know, to and from different locations to the school to help with parking. The YMCA donated parking spaces, the garage behind us donated parking spaces. We had sponsors that, you know, paid for the cost of the sound equipment and the TVs for the presentation. And then also, we had sponsors that paid for the cost of the lunch tables, because we wanted to really make sure that this was a professional day for our staff and that they were treated like professionals. And so we rented tables, so no one would have to sit in the cafeteria tables. We rented chairs and linens and the whole nine yards. The QEA very generously donated the lunch for, you know, nine hundred and fifty people, over nine hundred and fifty people. And so that, we really appreciated that. So it was a lot of work, but it was a great, great day, and it just really motivated us to do even better next year. So we've already started working on that. We did issue a PD survey that we sent out after the fact. We obviously, we met today to reflect and to go through, you know, the things that we noticed as a group. We have a professional development team that's in collaboration with the QEA. We met at the end of last year when we were planning this, and they gave us feedback on what they'd like to see for presenters. And so we're meeting with them again on December 7th. We'll review the PD feedback, and we'll, you know, we're already starting to work on the planning for next year. And so I just wanted to share a little bit of the highlights from the PD survey. So we had a total of five hundred responses. And so overall, in terms of the Professional Development Day, whether or not it met our educators' expectations, almost ninety-seven percent of the staff said that it met their expectations. The next question was about the communication, if the communication leading up to this event was clear and informative. Ninety-eight point four percent of our educators said that it was clear and informative. The registration and scheduling process, including the use of the SKED platform, which was our new platform that we use so that our educators could easily sign up for the day, was clear and easy to use. Ninety-six point six percent of the staff that completed the survey said that it was. The allotted time for each part of the day was adequate. Ninety-four point six percent felt that it was adequate. And the program offerings were relevant to your specific contact area and educational role. Ninety-four percent of our staff felt that it was. So, you know, we were very excited about the results. We got tons of positive feedback and thank you emails. And we so appreciate that, because that was really our goal, is to make sure it was effective and well-run and a professional day for our staff, which in the end only benefits our students when we provide really high-quality professional development and learning experiences for our teachers. And so that was the day in a nutshell, and I'm sure I'm forgetting, oh, the student volunteers, which was so impressive. So we had student volunteers from Quincy High School, you saw them on the video. They were amazing, the staff thought they were amazing. The presenters, who they escorted, we had a table, the presenters came in, they signed in, and then a student volunteer escorted them to their room and got them set up. And so next year, we're going to definitely expand that. We're going, we're talking about potentially having the students be the one in the breakout sessions that introduce the speakers, and also, you know, getting some student volunteers from North Quincy High School as well as Quincy High School. So we already have ideas on how to expand the student volunteer model, but it was, it was very effective, and they did an unbelievable job. And so that was the day, and I cannot thank the staff, the teachers, everybody that helped us enough. I can't say enough good things about it. It was truly a community effort, we are very proud of it. I know that back in the day, maybe thirty years ago, I think maybe things like this hap, they did think, a few things like this in terms of PD, but we haven't done it in a very long time. And so we so appreciate your support making it possible, and we are very happy with how it went. So thank you.
Any questions, Mrs. Lebo?
Just a comment. I had unsolicited comments from teachers throughout the community about how great it was. I'm so happy to see those numbers, because seriously, I thought maybe only the people who are happy were talking to me. But people came up to me when I was walking the beach, you know, just in the community, and said how great it was, unsolicited. So it was really, it sounded like a great, a great effort, and so professional, you guys can market yourselves now. You can run these things for everybody. No thank you, you say, right?
One time a year is good. It's good for us.
Any other comments, Mrs. Cahill?
I will say, like, when you said, you know, you think we have a professional staff, I think you pretty much are a professional staff with everyone that you work with. And also, I think it's like, thank you to you, because I'm sure you took a lot of the, you know, leadership role to pull it all together, so thank you. And you can tell that you're so happy and feel so good when things work out, you know? But I also think that it's a great reflection of, you know, sometimes, you know, we went through the contract stuff with the teachers and all that, but it shows that when we have these, our two groups working together, we can really get a lot of really good, positive things done. And hopefully that's, you know, how we can work together always. And this is a great reflection of, you know, putting some things together for our faculty and staff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great work.
Yeah.
Am I going to get, I always get the lounge chair as well this time. Isn't that weird?
Next item on the agenda, item D, Mrs. Hubley, convention update, Mass Association of School Committee.
Thank you. Yes, myself, Mrs. Lebo, attended the Mass Association of School Committee Conference November eighth, tenth, and it was wonderful, again, this year. We went to many, many great workshops in special education and IE and vocational classes, and it was amazing, so much. But at the assembly, which was a lot of, a lot of opinions in one place this year, trying to phrase that nicely, so many of the resolutions actually got tabled after quite a bit of discussion. I think I was in there for three and a half hours for eight resolutions. So it was, it was a lot.
Any ideas on the school committee?
I was going to say, it was, it was a lot. Anyway, so I, before you, you have a copy of all the resolution decisions on there for you to look at. But I would say, Resolution one was passed, Resolution two was passed, Resolution three failed, and after that, discussion started. So then Resolution four was tabled, Resolution five did pass with an amendment that's reflected on there to raise the cap. Resolution six was tabled, Resolution seven was tabled, and Resolution eight was also tabled after much, much discussion. There were many amendments that people tried to make to the resolutions that did not pass. And then, then they just got, then people just tabled them. And there was a amendment, I mean, there was a resolution made, I mean, a proposal to amend the bylaws that did pass, which was a small amendment to the timeline, basically, which was all it was. So, and I will leave it at that. If any of you has any specific questions, you're welcome to, to let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley. Item A, McKinney-Vanny-Vento homeless education grant for twenty thousand. We need a roll call vote to accept. Mrs. Lebo on the motion?
Motion to approve?
Seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Mayakoke?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, fiscal year 2024 Perkins Funds Grant for a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Is this you, Erin?
No. CBT.
Thank you for the donation, Erin.
Motion, motion made by Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mr. Gatto, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, a donation from Granite Telecommunications Corp rises for Lincoln Hancock, the sum of eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. You have a motion? Mr. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. Superintendent, call a roll, please.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Mayakoke?
Yes, nothing from Morgan &amp; Morgan?
Not yet. We're, we're making calls, so.
Next item, School Committee Policy, Section 257, School Committee Staff Communications for Referral to Policy Subcommittee by Mrs. Hubley. Motion to go into Subcommittee?
Yep, just move it in.
Do we need any vote on that, or is that a?
No.
Just move it in.
Overnight travel, out of state, June 4th through the 6th in 2024, Southwoods Middle School, grade eight to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, great trip.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made, seconded by Mrs. Cahill.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Additional in business, none. Communications, upcoming, School Committee meeting December 13th, 6:30 here at the Cottington. Reports to Subcommittee, sir.
I could add?
Sorry?
I add to Communications.
Sure.
Thank you. I forgot to make one note on the Mass Association of School Committee Conference, Barbara Davis of Holbrook School Committee was elected to be the Division III Chair, and I was voted to be the Division III Vice Chair.
My condolences.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item, reports to Subcommittee, nothing new to add, we have the quarterly budget report, everything is in good shape. With that, I'm going to need a motion from somebody to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations as well as school property, with the caveat, we will not be coming back to regular session. So motion's been made by Ms. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, and this is Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Santoro?
Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.